I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Washingtonville Board of Trustees Work Session. Board of Trustees also is the Architectural Review Board. And in front of us is the rendering of Orange County Bagel. Retail shop, retail shop. You can see how happy the people are walking in front of it. So I'll ask Greg Kumas, owner, to present. What do you want me to stand right up there or where should I?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm gonna sit here. You can join us. I wasn't really sure what exactly this entails, so I just made a set of each one of these. Basically, that's the, um, good, right hand. That's the, uh, these are all the plans that we've been going through with the planning board and the ZBA. This should be, uh, the last page should be the site plan. And everything else in between is kind of just our plans from the architect. Basically, what we're doing is with the outside of the, I guess we're talking about the outside of the building pretty much, or I guess you'll have whatever question you have.
Yeah, truly.
Yes. The trickiest part with the material for the outside of this building is what's available and when it's available. Because I don't know how, how many people have been following what's going on right now. But when it comes to wood and certain things, like to give an example, we have multiple, uh, you know, I'll start off first. The light posts, we picked out the light posts. These are, I think these are very similar to the ones you guys have at the library. One of those, and if you, I don't know if you want to pass it around and see it, but basically it's just kind of an extravagant and expensive light post. But they're really, really nice. And, and the planning, this is, I guess, what the planning board kind of wanted.
They received, they received special, so the village code makes it so that you're not supposed to encroach your light onto neighboring properties, but the planning board specifically asked them and gave them special permission to use similar light posts to what's used at Moffett Library. So as an effort to, uh, tie it.
Well, the square, actually the square, the three light posts said.
The library's different than the square.
Yes, they have the same.
I think they were, I believe what the board want, I'm not sure.
If they look like that, it's the square.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what it's more similar, yeah.
They're single, not double. Some of these.
Oh, are they double at the library now? I can't.
No, that's a different style.
Yeah, but it's, it's, I don't know if you guys want to see this or not, but it's basically very similar to that. Okay, pass it. Should I just leave it there?
That was a special consideration under CECL for the lighting.
The, the outside of the building, as far as we're gonna have, there'll be some vinyl siding, as you can see in those areas right there. And this is called, what's it called, that battened board type stuff, I think is what that's called. Yep. Where it's basically just, it's going a different direction. We really settled on a lot of darker colors. I have four different colors that we have picked out here. Let me show everybody. The biggest problem also is, like I said, if you pick, if we pick barber blend and they tell us that it's 16 and 18 weeks out, I don't want to wait five months to get the siding. So we might go with this safety brown or this hearth stone. I'll, I'll show them to you. But I don't know how specific you want, want me to be on that, but we really want to go with darker colors because we want this white to really pop off the building. And this also, we have several different stones picked out, and they're gonna be a little on the darker side too. Very earthy, very, but dark. So we have that, that, and then the roof, this shows it, um, this insinuates this could be metal, but this is gonna be an asphalt roof up here, just a regular asphalt shingle. What other questions you guys have for me? I can show you the different colors, but we really want to go with like a darker building with white signage. So we look at the building, it's very clean and clear looking. I didn't want really like a lighter colored siding.
So it's ashtray shingles on one top and on the bottom. The mid roof is that aluminum?
That's most likely gonna be aluminum, unless we can't get it right now from right here. It's funny, like, we're not the only people who like, for example, talk about getting metal studs instead of wood. You know, we, you know, as soon as you say that, they go, oh, really? Everybody's doing that because you can't get the wood. So everything is kind of like screwed up. I mean, we know what colors we're doing roughly, but I don't know if it's gonna be, I can pass this around, this one or that one or this one or that one, these four.
Are you saying the earth tone color?
Absolutely. We're not going with any, yeah, we want a darker earth tone looking building.
Yeah, we could see the.
Absolutely.
Also, just back to the roof, the, the main roof.
Yep.
You didn't want to go with the metal on the main roof?
Well, the problem is with the, with the, is that right now, for example, material is literally four times the amount as it was. So when we were doing our budget for the building, a metal roof is twice as much as an asphalt roof. So when you kind of play it around with everything and you look at, let's say, just the framing material. The framing material with the trusses and the frame of the building, I think the material, just the material, I think is, what is it? It's about 114,000, 150,000 just for the material. Now, that number realistically, pre-March 2020, could have been 48,000. So, I mean, you're talking, you're not talking about like two bucks to 250. You're talking about a number like a, a four by eight sheet of plywood is, what is it, 60 bucks now, which that number.
It's come down.
It's come down.
It's been 86.
Yeah, it's come, but that, 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 that number used to be like 27 or something. So you're talking about, when you, when you do the budget, the whole thing, um, the metal roof lasts longer, it'll be better. But you turn around and you say, well, if I'm spending an extra 100 grand here, can I save, you know, 20 grand here? And it comes out, I mean, we don't want, we're not really cutting in corners because, you know, we're not saving a penny on, on really anything. But that was one of the things we looked at, that we just decided that instead of doing a metal roof and it costing X, we would build with asphalt.
How, how much space is between the door and the curb?
You mean the overhang?
Yeah, well.
10 foot.
So the sidewalk, wherever, it would be about 10 feet?
Um, you're talking about this area right here?
Yeah, well, yeah, from like the door to.
To the column? Door to the column?
Yeah, I guess the door to the column.
Should be 10 foot. If you look on the last page, it should be 10 foot. And there's, there's an overhang in the front and the back.
Eight foot or something.
It's eight foot? There was that?
Yeah, page A4.
Oh, page, yeah. Yeah, th- this right here is 10 foot, and then in the back, there's also 10 foot. So when people come in here, there's, there's a 10 foot overhang. We'll probably have some benches or something under there, you know, something to that effect.
Lighting the signs, how, how do you intend to light the signs?
Um, lighting the signs is not on here, but we, I, I kind of liked the goose neck glutes. I think they look nice and they're pointed at the sign. They're not doing anything to the surrounding people around them. And I also think if you put like, uh, like a nice white goose necks, I think they kind of pop off, so they, it almost looks like a, uh, like a piece of, you know, it's not just like a, like one of these, like lights that you see around.
Well, I, I don't want to speak to everybody, but I think we would recommend goose necks.
Yeah.
We would recommend.
Yeah, I mean, them are on the same page and that's what we wanted to do.
The, the two windows in the top, they're not up, right?
No, they're not up.
They're for shingles.
They're for socks.
About the cobble on the top, is that, I mean, is that, or just fake?
That's fake, yeah.
Ever thought of putting a light up in here so at night it lights up?
No, I mean, that's possible. That could, that would kind of look kind of cool.
Does in the middle school have that or something? There is, it's up at night?
Yeah.
They, they, they ask questions a little bit more than.
Yeah.
Just the thought. Do you guys think about that? A light show lights up at night?
I'm just going there, sorry.
Any thoughts on that?
I'm a lighting gentleman.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really.
I'm worried how much everything doubles in price.
I mean, it's, uh, putting a light there is just running electric, putting a light, I mean, but it's, it's, I mean, we could look into that. It might look kind of cool, actually.
Maybe a little cool, but.
Yeah.
I looked into my deck and saw how much.
You gonna show us?
Yeah.
So just to keep in the board's mind as to what are the type of things that you can be, the type of things that you can be considering that's in the code. So gross floor area is one of them. I know somebody mentioned whether it's just design. That's one of the things that's actually more like practical. Height of building or height of roof. But then definitely all designer aesthetic features, material or quality of the architectural design, roof structures, chimneys, exposed mechanical equipment, service, storage, enclosure, signs, building materials, landscaping, retaining walls, fences, lighting posts.
That's a siding.
Siding.
Yeah, the roof is not eligible.
Is each store, I mean, is each store the same?
Same size? Yeah. 1800 square feet, 18, 18 total, which could be 40.
Do you have any renderings as to the designs that you're?
Designs?
Designs for the signs?
No, they're gonna be really very basic. We want to keep them clean. We're just gonna have probably, like, I'm probably not gonna, not probably, I'm not gonna have my logo on there. My logo might be in a window or something like that, but, but it's just gonna say like Orange County.
So they'll all look the same, like all the same font?
Yes, they're all gonna be clean and just, just.
Will some of that with your building for that?
Absolutely.
And a sign for it too. So what color shingles then?
I guess whatever they are, whether they're black, brown, like.
I like the brown better. What do you guys think on that building? Yeah, brown versus black.
I mean, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't even think about that. I just think they're asphalt shingles.
What do you think, Joe, as far as, as far as color of the shingles?
Yeah, brown. Most people don't. I don't know what color they are.
You don't know what colors until you go buy a new roof.
Yeah.
New light source.
Architectural shingles, they just have that little pattern to it.
I didn't look at that either.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure, I don't think you need to buy regular shingles.
You can, you just sell it regularly.
You can't.
Oh, yeah.
Architectural shingles is just a dimensional shingle.
Gotcha.
It's, I don't think it's any more expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't even, uh.
Just cost eight times the.
It's not more expensive to buy, the guy just charged you an extra $2 per thing. That's fine.
Now, you have a tenant for one of the stores.
I actually have two tenants, but one of the, and I, and I have a tenant for the person in the back. You know, we have that other little building in the back that used to be, uh, the guy manufacturing cheeseburgers back there. And by the way, we had nothing to do with him later, just so you know.
Oh, yeah.
He, uh, he went down. Yeah, I think he's in South Carolina. He left before we even.
Yeah.
But, um, yes, this is going to be us. This is gonna be a chiropractor. And this one, I don't know if he wants to be staying yet. That's why I don't want to say. It's, it's a, it's a very solid, normal community business. It's, it's not a, you know, it's a regular, I don't know, I can't really say, but that's what it's.
So it's not a peep show or anything like that?
No, we figured we would stay away from the peep show.
Thank you.
No vaping, no tobacco, no alcohol.
And I, I, I remember you saying in the very beginning that you do want to have another restaurant.
No, it's not food. There's no food in there. And it's, um, it's just a regular, normal life business. I mean, there's, there's not, I can't imagine anybody.
I got a one.
Well, actually, I shouldn't say that near 2021, but I could imagine anybody's gonna, but it'd be never a problem if it's not a.
Similar with the guy in the back or person. Can you say what's in the back or not?
Can I say? Yeah, the one in the back is gonna be Anna's Gourmet. She, she makes food off premises for people like keto and all that type of stuff. She has nobody that comes to her location. Excuse me, she doesn't, you don't sit down and eat there. It's all like.
Pick up?
Pick up to go. Uh, she already has a business that she's, she actually rents a commercial kitchen in another area. And she's going to do it here. I think she's from this area.
Keto, like it is.
Yeah, like she does all these different diets, like, you know, all these different, um, eating.
Like meal, like meal plans or?
Yeah, meal plans.
I like the meal plan idea.
So people just go there and pick it up. A business there.
My only other question for you is, I'm sure for, for the planning board, they are, and what Chipo had requested and what they're requiring is for you to look at the stone that's currently there in order to incorporate it into your design. Have you given more thought to that?
Yes, here, here's the thing with the building right now. The tough thing, I don't know if anybody's been in that building since the, uh, I'm sure nobody has, but the building is completely gutted. There's nothing in the building except studs. There's no sheet rock, there's no insulation, uh, there's really nothing in there. There's no, nothing in the ceilings. You could stand in the building and you could look around the whole building and see every, every part of the building. So there's really nothing in there. The stone on the outside, I don't know how we would really incorporate it because a lot of this stone right here, it's cultured stone. Obviously, it's much lighter, it's much easier to work with. That stone is, we're, we're trying to sell that stone actually to somebody who wants to use it for a building somewhere. You know what I mean? To do something with it. But I just don't know how I would incorporate that. That's real, that's heavy duty.
It's rubber.
Real.
Real stone. And I don't know how I would really, unless we built possibly some landscaping stuff with that stone, but I don't see how we would do that along the outside of the building.
I think even if you incorporated into the landscape, it would, it would meet, it would meet the, the planning board's concerns in terms of preserving some of that.
I think that's something we could do. We would go to do, take a couple of the beams and try and make something inside the store. A couple of little things with the beams, because there's some beautiful, beautiful wood in there, you know, old wood. But when you speak to a lot of these people who want to come either buy it or do this, that, it's a real process. And, uh, you know, I didn't want to have someone pick apart the building and make it unsafe when they knock it down or something. Okay, that's a good question.
Yeah, I just certainly urge, um, urge you to make sure that if any, any reclaimed things can be incorporated with whatever part of the design that would meet the planning board's requirements. Um, and then with regard to the historians coming, if they pick out anything and if it's feasible, that was another part of the planning board's.
Now, what would they do? They would pick out something?
They would unjack, right?
What's that?
There's nothing left.
Just beams?
They're coming, yeah, they're coming to, um, I don't know, I don't know if you set up anything for, or if you want to do, do it for me to have them come and document the outside portion. We agreed on the outside. I think that's, um, it would be probably dangerous for people to be walking around.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of burnt out beams.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to recommend that. So, um, they're definitely gonna go outside and document everything, but I, I, I don't know. I, in terms of.
I'm curious as to why they want to document it.
It's not a historical building.
It's not, yeah.
No, right, but that was, it was Chipo's recommendations in terms of mitigation factors, where to be, to have the historians document it. Um, just because of its age, it is, it's not on any records at all, um, but it was eligible. So because of that standard, it elevates it to.
So they have to give, uh, the owner the attorney frame, or they only have to give them attorney frame.
Like, what do they document? Then you can document.
I think there's gonna be like different pictures for cataloging purposes.
25 years ago, this is what was here.
Yeah, no, it was, yeah.
Oh, you mean like a before picture, I guess?
Yeah, just on building stands as, as now.
Like, I have.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you were here for.
No, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
That's fine. I mean, we, I, we have no issue with them taking pictures.
First time I'm hearing it, so.
Yeah, me too. I didn't know that was a recording, right? Then I can delay the project and come out and take a photo, right? I'll take a photo tomorrow.
No, I don't think, it's the village historians.
And when it comes to those rocks, you know, if you get five rocks, it can run a tree and be done.
There you go. I agree. I'd say if there's anywhere that I have to build some sort of little retaining wall, I could build a nice little retaining wall.
Yeah.
Somebody.
You pointed so long.
Somebody mentioned about the tree. It's an old tree. How do you find that old? It's gotta cut it down.
It's gonna sit there and count it.
Cut it down.
You can figure out how old the rock is too by splitting it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
The only comment I have is, uh, um, hopefully I'm speaking on behalf of the board. Thank you for investing in the Village of Washingtonville.
Well, thank you for, uh, you know, this process. It, it seems like it's taken a long time, but I get it. I understand that it is what it is. And, uh, you know, it is what it is. What are you gonna do?
I was gonna say, thank you for coming back and trying this again, because I remember.
I remember seeing her that time.
I was like, oh my god, that's a life change.
I said, don't be back.
Yes.
You know what? It's, it's, we, we like the spot. We like the, we like the village. Um, I actually live closer to Washingtonville than I do the Goshen. My, my kids go to Goshen schools, but I live kind of right in between a, a couple of houses. My neighbor actually in Campbell Hall, which is Washingtonville schools.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm right smack in the middle there. And, uh, we just saw, I mean, it's, for us, it seems like a, a nice area for us. And, you know, we, we like being part of the community. I told everybody that before. We sponsor multiple different youth football, youth this, youth that. And, and they're kind of our bread and butter. No pun intended. But, uh.
Our bagels are gonna be better here in Washington.
And, and, and we're also baking here in Washingtonville, which.
This is gonna be a mean hug.
We're gonna try, we bake in Middletown. We don't bake in Walden. We don't bake in, um, Goshen, but we're gonna bake here. And, uh, you know, I, we're just, we're looking forward to it. I mean, we're, we're excited about it. And, you know, it's funny, like, you open up a business and some people, some people say, you know, negative things. Some people say positive things. But they don't realize, you know, how much effort you put into a business.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, you put so much effort into this business and the last thing in the world you want to do is ever come to a community or a town and rub anybody.
You went the wrong way.
Which is impossible nowadays, because you're gonna rub somebody, like, you know what I mean? No matter what you do.
We haven't found that before.
No, but it's everywhere. It's, it's everywhere. And, and, and that's the last thing you want to do. So, I mean, we, we, we want to, uh, obviously get going, get open and move forward.
How long does something like this take?
Well, I don't, this is by far the longest process, which is.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, realistically, if, if there's not huge delays with getting this beam or getting that pole or something like that. I mean, I'm hoping it goes relatively quickly because we have all of our guys lined up and I've dealt with most of them in the past. So I don't anticipate anybody kind of flaking out on us on their job, which we'll happen to. But, uh, I mean, I don't want to give out an exact timeframe, but, um, as soon as we can get our approvals and we can get our permits, get, get the building down and then just start diving into it, I think it's gonna go much faster than.
Well, I agree. A bagel.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm hoping it does. And I, and we want to be done long before any snow falls because that just makes it hard. But once the building is enclosed, then you're good.
You're good, yeah.
You're the prime spot for this.
Yeah, no, we, we like the spot.
The high school, the middle school, yeah. It's gonna be ethical. Or I, well, I will say it, but I won't guarantee I'll have to walk in distance from my house. Not that I walk. He is within walking distance of my house.
You know, not for nothing, but the, the goal also is if, if people see, you know, they see a building go up and then maybe somebody else drives to Washingtonville after we're open and they look and they say, oh, this, you know, you know, there's, there's a lot going on here. Let me build something else. So I, I, I mean, that's how I always think. And, and if we could do that and, and things start, whatever, then.
I think it's a beautiful building.
And everybody's happy.
It's a good, it's a good show.
Yeah.
It's a good, it's a good firm. It's a good firm.
Yeah.
The fence, that's it. Whose fence is that?
That's a million dollar question.
They have decided to take care of the fence. I don't know if that was ever settled. I think it was, it may be right on the borderline, but I understand that you almost have committed.
The survey, well, the surveys show it like being like right smack. The fence between us and Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
That really looks dilapidated. I mean, it's like half down, half this. It's, it doesn't look.
There's a void to the building, right?
No. But, I mean, personally for me, I, I'm just gonna get ahold of the guy who owns the Dunkin' Donuts, the property, to say, listen, we're putting up a nice new building. If it's your fence, do you mind if we put up a nice new something there? If it's not your fence, then, then we don't have to talk about it. But, uh, I definitely think, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense to not spend an extra couple of thousand bucks to make it a nice fence as opposed to leaving up a beat up, half knocked down fence, you know?
This is where they're gonna put the coffee and come over and dip the bagel. They'll have the coffee in the bagel.
Well, there is, you know, um, future for the area, the whole area. Of course, the street from there, over the park, which is like the heavy trees today, it's bloody trees.
115.
Well.
I don't know, I could count on the driver.
What'd you guys plant the trees?
That's the little park across from the mistletoe.
Across the, the park that, uh, next, kind of next to the, oh, okay.
So hopefully that would be completed as soon as we can.
No, it should be really nice. I mean, I mean, it really, it really should be nice. And we're gonna be here, you know, um, be here a lot. And we want it to look nice. It's not like some, you know, big chain coming in and saying, oh, we won't stay here for 20 years.
I like that you're baking here because then, like, if they run out, there's always, they can cook more.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And you can smell it, you know?
Then we go to a wood field real quick.
Yes.
The smell is, the smell is, is, is a good.
Oh, it's a great thing, justly.
Do we need to do anything in writing or just a vote?
Uh, I think we send a letter to.
If you have any specific recommendations, I don't know if the board is, if you're just comfortable with saying earth tones. Um, I think that was, that's already in your plans. So if you just want to say, you know, that you're satisfied with your review and send a letter to the, to the planning board, um, that's sufficient.
Yeah, well, he's doing it for the planning board or is it only?
Um, so we, the planning board did issue their negative declaration under CECL. So CECL is complete, which allowed them to move forward to the ZBA. Uh, the ZBA had to wait, because it was a coordinated review, they had to wait for the planning board to issue, to finish CECL. Now that that's done, the zoning board is allowed to take final action on their portion of the project. And then once that's complete, they'll have to come back to us for their final, um, art, their final determination.
Then we come back here.
If they're satisfied.
I know.
Wow.
Awesome. I'm very excited.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Looks good.
Well, yeah, thank you for investing in the Village of Washingtonville. Those really, uh, steps that you had to take, that you had to go through.
More like a dance.
We were actually, we did something in town a while ago, a long time ago, and it took us like probably over a year from start to finish with the planning board.
I was sure we were ahead of schedule.
You guys are. But there, but there, unfortunately, you go to a planning board meeting and you're on the agenda and you're number like 19.
Oh.
And you're, and you get there and you just like sit there like, and then on number three, they're talking about something for two hours. You're like, I could be here forever.
Yes.
Trade the numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll prepare the letter on behalf of the board and send it to, uh, both planning and zoning.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Just say that as far as ARB is concerned, we are satisfied, satisfied with what the sun has is.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Glad you were first on the agenda.
Yes.
Something else, right?
Number 376.
Anybody from the public?
You guys are gonna cock room here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, don't, don't take the clips.
I have a billion clips. I don't need clips.
And do you bake the bagels?
I'll make the bagels.
Me personally?
Yeah.
I've done it a million times, you know, but, uh, you know, lately I haven't, I haven't done it in a couple, a couple of years. But I mean, I'll go in there if we have a problem and, you know, I'll bake a couple of lots of it.
Oh, really?
What's that? We steam it.
Is this going to be according to our seven position?
Um, probably about two hours, we won't be there because they usually bake, like in Middletown, they bake from, depending on the day of the week, usually from 8, 9 p.m. to, uh, 4 a.m.
Oh, my god.
But here, I don't anticipate, because there, they're baking right now for three stores, right? So they're baking all night. So, but our store closes there at like 3:00. So from 3:00 p.m. to 8, 9 p.m., if there's nobody at the store. But besides that, they kind of bake all night.
Nice grounds.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the problem is I didn't eat bagels for like, uh, for like three months every time I was there.
Angry.
Yeah.
Angry.
Yeah, I didn't have to eat it for the house.
You guys don't need them this time.
No, you take that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very, very much. Really appreciate it. And I guess I'll take this one back. Is that all right? Do you want this? Just how, how you want it?
Yeah.
All right. All right, goodbye. Got your keys?
I got my keys. I gotta go. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Now, do we have to close this portion of the meeting? So let's make a motion to close this portion where we want to have discussion.
Oh, um, a motion to refer it back to the planning board.
So a motion to refer this back to the planning board.
A second. I was peeing.
So a motion made by trustee Kolor. Okay. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Legato. Roll call trustee Kolor.
Yes.
Trustee Sampson.
Yes.
Trustee Kolor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Legato.
Yes.
Right here, I'll refer it back to. Make a motion to, make a motion to close this portion of our work session, ARB meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
You're so fast.
I am today.